Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:02 and we'll call the meeting to order. All members are present and we'll start with the transmitting of Treasury Warrants 29, 29A, 29B, 30, and 30A. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Made in second and all in favor. Unanimous. There are no minutes to approve this evening, so we'll move directly to our 7 o'clock agenda item, which is scheduled with Jeffrey M. Hall, Town Manager, and it's regarding the presentation of Town Manager's FY 2014 budget. Mr. Hall?
Good evening and thank you to Chairman Newhouse and the Board of Selectmen, to John Doherty, the Chairman of the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee members. I'm honored this evening to present to you the proposed plan to finance the provision and delivery of services to residents and businesses of the town of Wilmington for fiscal year 2014. This plan builds upon the solid foundation of fiscally conservative budgets submitted by former Town Manager Michael Kira. I am especially honored to submit this budget as the new Town Manager. Mr. Kira established a legacy of prudent management of the town's resources combined with wise investment in our assets. It's my goal to continue that work while providing additional emphasis on formalized long-range planning. Specifically through this budget, I seek to achieve the following. Continuing investment in the tools and initiatives that support a 21st century education for Wilmington's children. Reduce our energy consumption through investment in buildings, vehicles, and systems throughout the town. Increase our utilization of technology as a tool to improve service delivery to the public. Develop a formal multi-year capital improvements plan to assist in making informed decisions in spending, borrowing, and saving for future capital needs. And evaluating our existing policies to enhance our risk management efforts and improve efficiencies of our operations. This budget is submitted for consideration by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. It was developed using conservative revenue forecasting, sensible operating cost projections, and a focus on investment in capital largely financed through annual revenues. I am proposing $87,660,023 in operating and warrant article expenditures and $2,189,555 in capital projects for a total proposed appropriation in FY 2014 of $89,849,578. With respect to revenues, indicators appear to be mixed with regard to the economy, both locally and nationally. Negotiations on key national matters such as the debt ceiling and national budget add to the economic volatility directly impacting Wilmington, which has a significant technology and defense presence. Additionally, decisions made at the federal level have a direct bearing on state funding, either through local aid or pass-through grants available for municipal services and programs. The new revenue projections for fiscal year 2014 are reflective of these uncertainties. The primary revenue source for the town is the tax levy, or the property tax. Revenue projections for fiscal 2014 include the customary tax levy increase of 2.5 percent, which is allowed under the Massachusetts general laws, equating to an increase of $1,508,898. Additionally, new growth is projected to increase $700,000 in fiscal year 2014 due to various development projects underway. Residential real estate values have been declining since 2008. Current projections indicate residential values are beginning to plateau. While residential values have been generally declining, total commercial values have increased each year since 2008. Personal property has seen the greatest increase and is the main contributor to new growth for fiscal year 2013, increasing by 46 percent since 2008. Personal property increases include investment in equipment made by commercial and industrial companies and changes in state law that affect taxing utility poles. As an indicator of the volatility and the mixed messages, the retail store Target is planning to open a 140,000-square-foot store on Ballardvale Street in the coming year with groundbreaking scheduled for the spring or summer. Analog Devices, which in 2012 started discussing plans to invest $200 million to expand their Wilmington campus, recently notified the town that due to global economic uncertainty, their expansion plans have been tabled indefinitely. The office supply retailer Staples, which has served as a flagship business at Wilmington Crossing, recently closed. State aid from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is the second-largest source of funding for the town of Wilmington. The Department of Revenue is reporting revenue growth from income and sales tax to be lower than projected for the current fiscal year. Governor DeValle Patrick has been forced to propose a series of measures, including a freeze on state hiring, reducing state expenditures, including expenditures in support of local school systems, and a request to expand the so-called 9C authority to reduce aid to cities and towns. With Governor Patrick, while Governor Patrick has expressed an interest and desire to increase aid to school districts, in light of the Commonwealth's own budget challenges, the prudent approach to, is to project level funding of state aid at $13,184,146. Local receipts, which is the motor vehicle excise, local meals tax, charges to ambulance, or for ambulance services, and fees for various licenses, places a distant third in terms of the total contribution to the revenue stream. This revenue source is projected at $6,877,000, which represents a 3.7 percent increase over fiscal 2013's original estimates. The growth in revenue is attributed to increases in motor vehicle excise, penalties and interest on delinquent taxes, and increased revenue from ambulance services achieved through changes in rates made at the start of fiscal 2013. Taken together, the property tax, local aid, and local receipts amount for nearly 96 percent of the town's revenue. On the expenditure side of the equation, I'm recommending a fiscal year 2014 budget of $89,849,578, which represents an increase of 3.9 percent over fiscal 2013. Costs for municipal operations are expected to increase by 2.3 percent, while costs for schools are budgeted to increase by 3.9 percent in total. Nondiscretionary shared costs between general government and the Wilmington School Department, including maturing debt and interest, insurance, statutory charges, and capital are projected to increase by 6.4 percent. This budget also proposes $2,189,555 for capital encompassing a broad range of projects, including vehicles, building systems, parks and recreation, and technology. A complete description of the capital projects may be found within the budget document. Incorporated into this budget are two new full-time positions. A new high school, the new high school requires a comprehensive system for managing heating, cooling, lighting, and the security of the building. The benefits of having this new position include improving maintenance, planning, and increased energy efficiency. Building systems of this nature have increased in sophistication and complexity, requiring special expertise to both balance the systems initially and maintain them throughout the life of the building. For this reason, a building systems manager position has been added to the public building's budget. To maximize the effectiveness of the system being developed for the school, this position will be filled while the school is under construction. This position will be directly and actively involved in the project as it progresses through construction. Ultimately, it is my goal to utilize this position to assist in developing a broader energy efficiency plan for town buildings. Law enforcement's reliance on technology to keep, reliance on technology to track, disseminate, and analyze crime data has grown exponentially over the past 10 years. Communications and reporting with state police, neighboring police departments, the district attorney's office, the courts, and others continue to become more computer-based. Currently, the department's intricate technology needs are being managed by a sergeant, which is straining other policing operations. The new position, an information technology administrator, is proposed as a civilian technology specialist. This person will be responsible for managing the police's secure network system, coordinating and implementing new systems, researching and evaluating new tools, maintaining the various existing hardware and software applications, and reducing system downtime, which can dramatically impact police operations. Finally, the budget incorporates some changes in the library staff, which are expected to result in the addition of a part-time position. The library department has continued to be innovative in its programming and service model, changing as the public changes how it seeks information and library resources. In total, the net anticipated increase in full-time equivalents for fiscal year 2014 are 2.5 positions. This budget reflects salary adjustments for personnel and three unions with signed contracts. Funds are also set aside for potential salary adjustments for three unions without signed contracts and for non-union personnel. The most significant increase is occurring in the area of health insurance. The town successfully worked with representatives from both the municipal and school unions in the spring of 2012 to control insurance costs through increases in co-pays and deductibles. These measures are helping to moderate cost increases in medical claims expenditures. However, medical inflation and an aging workforce continue to impact the overall insurance cost. Health insurance based upon claims experience through December of this year is projected to increase 12 percent in fiscal year 2014. Insurance for employees on-the-job injuries is also expected to increase by 25 percent due to high claims experience in both 2010 and 11, which continues to influence the premiums. The number of injuries involving lost time appears to be trending in the right direction at the moment. Since worker's compensation is based upon the most recent three complete years of experience, the town needs to have a sustained reduction in the cost of work injury claims to realize the benefits in terms of premium. In both health insurance and injuries on-the-job, risk management and loss control programs can play a significant role in managing costs. In the coming year, I plan to investigate opportunities to improve the town's efforts to promote healthful habits and preventive care. Wellness programs have been proven to result in lower claims and a healthier, more productive workforce. Further, I have made recent changes in the town's safety committee, charging it with developing new approaches to evaluating trends in injuries on-the-job and seeking innovative approaches to reducing their occurrence. Through the benefit of these efforts will not be directly realized in the short term, it is expected that this focus will reap savings for the town in the long term. The town provides a number of important services to residents. Clearly, one such service of paramount importance is educating the youngest generation to be discerning, curious, and critical thinkers. Given global interconnectedness, students are competing for college placement and jobs with not only young adults from neighboring towns and states, but with young adults on the other side of the world. Preparing our youth to succeed in whatever endeavors they choose is our fundamental responsibility. The goals of Wilmington Public Schools, as articulated by School Superintendent Joanne Benton, include maintaining recommended staffing levels to retain advantageous class sizes at all levels, expanding in-house special education programs at the intermediate level, continuing to offer full-day kindergarten in flexible individualized learning environment, supporting the continued integration of technology into the classroom to improve student learning through strong curricula and instructional programs, establishing additional advanced placement courses at the high school level. To support the achievement of these goals, the budget proposed proposal includes an appropriation of $33,628,350 for Wilmington schools, representing an increase of $1,058,520, or a 3.25 percent increase. Additionally, $294,050 in capital investments are proposed and primarily focused on enhancing technology resources. The funds provided for this budget will enable the school department to retain the caliber of teachers, aides, administrators, and support staff required on a daily basis throughout the school year to translate educational goals into reality. As Superintendent Benton has noted, quote, "Throughout the past several years, our collective challenge has been to balance the need to provide high-quality educational experience for every child with the resources available," end quote. It is with sincere gratitude that I acknowledge the efforts of Superintendent Benton. She is committed to continuing the strong working relationship that has existed for many years now between the municipal government and school administration. Personally, her advice and support in the formative years of my new role as Town Manager have been invaluable. Charles Lyons, Superintendent of Schools for the Shawshene Regional Technical High School, is seeking $3,612,275 to fund the broad range of technical and educational programs offered at the Shawshene Tech. Just as a recent add here, we met with the superintendent last Thursday and were, received information that ultimately was used in preparing this budget. Since then, we've been informed that that number may change, but we've budgeted conservatively and are expecting that the number will be no higher than the number we've budgeted for the town's assessment. So I think in the end we'll be okay, but that number is still in some level of flux. The request represents a 1.4 percent increase over the current fiscal year. With the recent completion of their health science wing, Superintendent Lyons demonstrates a commitment to constantly assessing and reassessing the employment environment and adjusting the curriculum to provide valuable and relevant educational programs for students. With respect to improving our energy efficiency, the town has made significant investments in building system improvements that have resulted in energy savings. The annual commitment to upgrade roofs, building envelopes, and heating systems will pay dividends through reduced energy costs in the future. This budget includes proposals to continue the building system upgrades and to begin adjusting how vehicles, vehicle needs are met with more fuel-efficient approaches. Since 2010, the town has replaced roofs at the West Intermediate School, water department garage, public works office and garage, public buildings office and garage, and the Wilmington Memorial Library. Additionally, windows at the Wilmington Memorial Library and Shawshene Elementary Schools were replaced. Window replacement at the Shawshene Elementary School alone resulted in a reduction in heating oil use of approximately 10,000 gallons in the past year. Within the budget proposal is funding for the completion of the West Intermediate School roof replacement program and replacement of the North Intermediate School boilers. Additional funding is also required for the North Intermediate School window project, which has seen significant cost increases over the original estimate. Voters at the May 4, 2012 Annual Town Meeting authorized $804,640 to replace the windows at the North Intermediate School. This project cost, a cost estimate was based largely on the Shawshene School window replacement project completed in 2011. The North Intermediate School window project is being funded through the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or MSBA, Accelerated Repair Program, which is a separate program from the Green Repair Program through which the Shawshene Elementary School windows were funded. Due to different requirements under the Accelerated Repair Program, a more complicated window design, price escalation associated with materials and labor, and an increased demand for school building construction, the total expected project cost for the North Intermediate School is currently $1,478,019. Nearly 50 percent of that cost, or 49.94 percent to be exact, will be reimbursed by the MSBA. However, the town must authorize the full funding of the project in order to proceed. At the annual town meeting, voters will be asked to increase the total funding authorization by $673,379. After reimbursement from the MSBA, the true cost to Wilmington will be $740,645. Returning to town meeting to seek a funding increase of this magnitude is not something I take lightly. However, the need to replace the current window systems exists now and will continue to exist if no action is taken. The window of opportunity, so to speak, to receive state reimbursement for nearly half the project is now. The completion of a new roof, the transition from 1962 oil-fired boilers to modern gas-fired boilers, and replacement of the original windows are part of a comprehensive effort to lower the energy costs for this building. Improving energy efficiency is also a goal for the town's vehicle fleet. The Ford Crown Victoria has been the vehicle used for police operations and cycled to non-police operations for over 20 years. Ford recently discontinued production of the Crown Victoria Police Package. The town is transitioning police cruisers to SUV-style vehicles, which have improved gas mileage and handling over the Crown Victoria. The first complement of new Ford Escape SUV cruisers is due to be on the road shortly. Despite the delayed rollout of the new SUV cruisers, the budget proposes purchasing four additional SUVs in order to continue the progress towards transitioning to a more fuel-efficient fleet. In concert with the police cruiser transition, this budget begins addressing the town's general fleet with a gradual phase-out of Crown Victorias to more job-appropriate and fuel-efficient vehicles. Specifically, the DPW supervisors and water supervisors vehicles, both aging Crown Victorias, are proposed for replacement with more fuel-efficient vehicles. Technology is an important and vital tool in our operations and education efforts. The proposed budget places a priority on technology opportunities that will serve to enhance student learning, how the public interacts with town departments, and how the town departments interact with each other, all with a goal of improving efficiency and access to service. Included in the capital requests are various technology improvements throughout the school districts, such as wireless access, interactive smart boards in the classrooms, and new computers in the school labs. Through the school's operating budget, new technology integration specialists will be added to all levels of the system to assist staff with developing connections between the classroom and technology utilized today. Technology plays an increasingly important role in enabling municipal departments to provide services. In addition to recommending an information technology administrator position for the police department, efforts are being pursued through a collaboration of departments to better utilize technology in our daily operations. A new internal technology committee has been established and includes staff from accounting, assessing, the building inspector, library, town clerk, IT, police, engineering, water, and the manager's office. The committee's goals are to reduce reliance on paper as a means of communicating, which will improve efficiency, reduce costs, and move the town towards a more green approach to operating. Make local government services available online. Improve efficiency, connectivity, and information sharing amongst departments. And promote training and education in the use of existing and available technology. The committee is working on a training program focused on public records retention. The town's website content is currently under review with a specific focus on shaping and organizing content in a manner that meets the public's need, as opposed to the needs of the internal organization, and new online tools such as bill paying and registration are being evaluated. A plan is also in development to update the town's GIS mapping system to make it more accessible across departments. Through the disciplined efforts of my predecessor and in cooperation with department heads, Wilmington has made investments in its capital assets a constant priority in spite of the constrained budgetary environment. Since fiscal year 2010, the town has committed an average of $3.2 million each year for capital projects. Each year, the identified demand for replacement of equipment and vehicles, upgrades to water lines, and replacement of roofs and boilers far exceeds the financial wherewithal to address all in a single year. Unavoidably, requests must be deferred. As a follow-up to the development of the annual operating budget, I plan to work with department heads in the school administration to review the deferred capital requests and establish a five-year capital improvement plan. A capital improvement plan is a tool to anticipate and make informed decisions about capital projects and expenses annually within the context of demands for capital improvement over a five-year time horizon. The plan will serve to assist in the assessment and scheduling of both deferred requests and new requests for capital expenditures. There are some additional initiatives that we also address in this budget. This budget has been developed with an expectation that additional funding may be necessary for the new high school project; therefore, current reserves will be protected. The new high school project received an overwhelming vote of support from the town. However, a small group of citizens have opposed the construction of a new high school and have gone to great length to stymie this project, causing unnecessary costs and delays. The original schedule called for the work to begin on demolition of the high school gymnasium in June of 2000, July of 2012. Since the initial appeal of the Conservation Commission's Order of Conditions and the subsequent appeals, the town has continued with the planning and preparation for a 21st century high school. Solicitation for various trade and non-trade construction work has proceeded in accordance with Massachusetts public procurement laws. A preliminary review of the competitive trade bids opened on January 24th of this year reveal mixed results. Bid packages are currently being reviewed, and a final assessment of the actual costs compared to pricing estimates will be presented at the High School Building Committee meeting in February. I would say just as a side note that the bids that did come in last week, there were three categories, at least three categories of bids that came in significantly higher than were budgeted. There were other categories of work that came in lower, so there's a process going on now to assess what the ultimate, what this ultimately means in terms of the overall The funding commitment of $38 million made by the MSBA will not change regardless of the cost escalation resulting from the various appeals. In light of this prospect, the town's free cash reserve of $11,255,673 is proposed to remain relatively untouched so as to ensure there are funds to draw from if the delays result in costs which exceed the approved project budget. The Entile Farm Development Committee, chaired by Selectwoman Judith O'Connell, has been working since October on a evaluation of the community's recreation needs and how the former farm property can be developed into a recreational complex. The committee has overseen the completion of a survey of the land and has gathered a significant amount of input through interviews and broad public survey. The results are being analyzed for the, for presentation to the Board of Selectmen at an upcoming meeting. I am recommending an appropriation of $50,000 to engage a landscape design firm to use information developed through this process and develop a conceptual and schematic design for this space. for this space. The work will include developing design alternatives and advancing the selected options to schematic design and cost decimating. In conclusion, the budget document before you is a deliberate plan to continue the town's progress towards serving the residents and business community in a more effective, responsive, and efficient manner. These efforts will always be a work in progress, and there will always be room for improvement. The challenge is to sustain the patience, persistence, and passion to find a better way. Following in the footsteps of Michael Kyra, I'm incredibly fortunate to assume the role of town manager for a community that is in very strong position with unparalleled financial reserves compared to similar-sized communities and a highly dedicated team of department heads, staff, and volunteers, working to provide a wide range of services. Clearly, there is no need for wholesale change in the way the town conducts its business. However, I do believe there are changes I can contribute that will further improve upon our ability to meet the expectations of the community into the future and have developed a budget proposal to articulate those changes. My expectation is that this proposed budget will be rigorously examined and critiqued. I welcome the opportunity to engage in a reasoned, respectful, and healthy dialogue about the proposals offered here and the opportunity to further improve upon this Just by way of acknowledgement, there are a number of folks I'd like to just acknowledge tonight. Many of them are in the audience. Again, I just wish to acknowledge Joanne Benton, the school superintendent, Paul Regiro, Director of Administration Finance, and their team. Again, I really appreciate the teamwork that has gone on now for some time. We've dealt with a number of projects here, the Shawshank Windows, various building improvement projects, the North Project that we're now dealing with, but it's a good situation to be in because that isn't always the case in a lot of communities, so that's something I truly value. I also want to acknowledge the members here from the school committee because certainly they understand as well the value of teamwork, that it's more about teamwork than competing for dollars, and that's greatly appreciated. Members of the finance committee, there's a number of members in the audience that I would also acknowledge, and I know we'll be talking with you over the upcoming weeks about the budget process and looking for your thoughts and direction on changes that you might like to see. There are a number of department heads in the audience. I see Pam McKenzie, treasure collector, in the audience, also Terry Marciello, the senior citizens director. And I also want to give special thanks to the folks that were involved in putting this budget together. Certainly from the town accountant's office, Mike Morris, he's been here, believe it or not, longer than I have, by a few months, and is clearly a veteran when it comes to money management. He's the money man, and he's well-respected in his association. He knows municipal finance, and I really rely upon him in many respects when it comes to looking at the finances of the town and certainly with regard to putting this budget together. Lorraine Herman, who's also a longstanding member of the team, is very much involved in this process. Ultimately, as the numbers get crunched and they have to be put in final form, we rely on her to her accuracy and attention to detail to get it right, and she's done that for a number of years now. In my office, certainly starting off with Beverly Dalton, the administrative assistant, fortunately she elected to stay on even though she'd been working for Mike for 20-some-odd years. I greatly appreciate her being there, her institutional knowledge, not only of the process that we just went through, but all of the various issues that come into my office. It's just, I'm glad to have her. In terms of the process with the budget here, she coordinates the development of a lot of the supporting documents that are put forth for this budget. In addition to Beverly, we have Wendy Martinello and Paula Berry there. They also work very diligently on preparation of the budget. There's a tremendous amount of proofreading that goes on, collating documents, a lot of thankless work that folks aren't really going to appreciate necessarily, but I certainly do because I know the time and energy and the effort that they put in, and I appreciate that. And the newest member of our team is Kendra Amaral, and I have to tell you, as a town manager, I'm paid to make the right decisions. And it's incredibly important, I think, in any leadership position to surround yourself with capable people. And the first major decision I had to make as town manager was appointing my replacement as the assistant. And I wanted to have someone with a broad base of municipal experience, someone with a strong work ethic, with a positive attitude, who could work effectively with department heads and staff, and who would also challenge my thoughts and ideas, and I found that and more with Kendra. She's been an incredible part of this process, really involved intimately in it, and I can't say enough about her involvement and my appreciation for that. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Why don't we first go to the audience, and then we'll come to the board for any questions or comments? Yes, Superintendent Benton.
Good evening, Joanne Benton, Superintendent of Schools. I just would like to echo some of what Jeff said about me. I truly have enjoyed the beginning of a great relationship working with Jeff on the budget, and what I appreciate the most in Jeff is his attention to detail and his ability to think outside the box and think of ways to push us to look at our funding in different ways, and I truly think it's a collaborative effort, so I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Oh, I'm sorry. Peggy Kane, chairperson of the school committee.
I just wanted to say, on behalf of the school committee, to Mr. Hope, we are so pleased and grateful, first of all, that the town is able to see what a gift we have in Joanne Benton and how wonderful she has been as a superintendent and in her leadership role over these past few years, which probably seemed like a longer time than a few years, and the fact that you two could work so well together and we didn't have to worry about a gap, that things went along so well, and that we still see the children as our number one priority in the town. And we totally appreciate all your efforts and good work with her, and we thank you both.
Any other comments from the audience? To the board.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, as our new town manager, Jeff, and our new chief fiscal officer, I want to congratulate you on your first fiscal budget, and I'm sure there's many more to come. I like the idea of a couple of new positions. It just makes sense where we're going to be spending $83 million, $84 million plus for a new high school. It makes sense that we create a position, a building systems manager for our new high school. It makes perfect sense to me. I also like the idea that a civilian position at our police department, a new technical ology administrator, which makes sense, allowing police officers to do their job in law enforcement to protect our streets and to protect the citizens. So there's a couple of positions, I think, that are worthy of this new budget. I'd like to save comment a little later, Mr. Chairman. I know the other board members would like an opportunity to say other things as well, but for the most part, Jeff, I like what I see and look forward to a good working relationship, and I'm glad to see everybody working together, the school committee and the Board of Selectmen, and vice versa. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what Selectman McCoy had said, and following in what's-his-name's footsteps that God has done for you. No, seriously, all the work that has been put into just to get to this evening is a lot of work, putting all this together, but to actually implement all the numbers and do all the work and balance the checkbook and actually pay the bills is even more so. So I congratulate you on doing such a wonderful job on your first budget, and hopefully it's your first of many.
Well, I also want to echo some of the comments that have already been made. I wanted to congratulate you. This is certainly a very detailed and comprehensive plan. I truly appreciate all that goes into it. As I spend another year working in public government, you realize the infrastructure in the back office, if you will, and the team that exists behind these presentations, and I can tell that for all of you, it's a labor of love, and you really take a lot of passion in bringing the services that you do to the town of Wilmington. And I can't tell you how important I think it is for the continued commitment to education and especially to our town's youth. But in addition to that, I see every year that we are consistently dedicated to services for all residents of the town of Wilmington and that we're very committed to our infrastructure in whether it's buildings, personnel, school, our schools, our public safety. You simply have a limited budget and you have necessary needs that need to be taken care of. And I like the concept of being committed to the town and its people and the people that work here. And it's one thing to hire an infrastructure of personnel, as much as you want to take care of your residents, you want to take care of the people that work here. And so we want to recruit and attract the brightest to come here and work at the town of Wilmington, and we want to, quite frankly, retain them. And as we're doing that, we have rising costs, we have energy efficiency, we have things that we can do better, and I just want to compliment all the people that are in the room on the positive can-do attitude that as much as it's easy to be critical and critique and we have delays and we have hardships, people still come in and do their jobs every day and they persevere, and they still want to make a difference in this community, and each and every one of you has value. And I'm just pleased to see that the town recognizes that collectively and that we're moving forward. I also want to say that it's very positive, the fiscal position that we're in, and we have the financial reserves that we have, and what's really, as much as there's a lot of positive news, there are a lot of uncertainties with these budgets that are coming back for some major capital projects, and I think that speaks to the fact of why it's important to retain a certain fiscal position because we are in uncertain economic times. Things are improving, but we're still in a state of transition. Also, too, I'd like to echo the comments on Kendra's addition. Working on the Entile Farm Committee project, I've had an opportunity to work with her very closely, and what a bright, bright spot to have been added into this town hall, and certainly has a real positive can-do attitude and just is simply genuine, friendly, and very, very smart. So I really am glad to see that that working relationship has been started, and I expect it to continue. And I just want to say thank you again, and I also want to say thank you to Mike Kyra for what he has laid the groundwork, but make no mistake about it, you've been right beside him all the way through and doing it for the past 20-plus years, so I'm glad to see that things are going to continue on and get better and better. So thank you.
What she said. Sorry. I heard a couple of bullets there. I'll just simply, I'll try to be brief and say that one of the things I was very delighted about when you took the job was that we were going to be able to maintain some consistency. Having sat next to and worked so closely with Mike Kyra through all those years, we expected, quite frankly, and I shouldn't say "we," pardon me, I expected and frankly believed that you would deliver a consistent level of service and approach it in a consistent manner, and the budget presentation you've presented here is evidence of that. So that's peace of mind to me, not that I suspected that it would be otherwise. Some bullets that I heard that were very positive to me were, as have been mentioned previously by my colleagues, educational investing, and I'll say that word probably several times as I go through this, the word "investing" came up several times. Environmental and energy efficiency investments. These investments aren't free. They require us to be diligent, to look forward, to be thinking down the line, but while we are in a, or while the economy struggles, it's an opportunity for those that have the luxury of the ability to make investments, in my opinion, to do so. Not to sock it away, but this is the opportunity now to take advantage of our strong position fiscally and to make these investments, both in terms of infrastructure for the buildings, in terms of technology to make us more efficient, in terms of vehicle fleets that are also more efficient. And again, efficiency equals cost savings. Cost savings is a reduction in taxpayer expenditures. So these are positives, both in the short and the long term, so I commend you and I compliment you on that. The health insurance was no surprise to find or to hear that that is the largest increase over the course of the other items in the budget. We hear about it in the private sector and throughout the public sector, and it's, everyone throughout the entire society, our entire society is wrestling with how to manage healthcare costs. I know that that's an area of expertise that you've acquired through the years as assistant town manager, and I know that you're investing, and the plan going forward is to continue to find efficiencies with regards to the health insurance. I guess I'll leave it at that, and again, echo my colleagues' congratulations and thanks to you and to all of the participants out in this audience throughout the various departments, my colleagues at the Board of, at the school committee level, for participating in the process, for thinking conservatively, for being prepared to make investments and to do what's right for not just this fiscal year, but for generations to come, and to make sure that Wilmington's in a position to be able to take advantage of all the good things that will be available to us. So thank you, Jeff, for the presentation. I look forward to the wrestling match that will occur over the next several weeks, but I think it's a positive, so thank you.
I would just add, and I agree with all the points that have been made by my colleagues, I think the one point that I would make is that if I were to have to come up with a bottom-line message for the budget that you've just delivered, I would say that it's, don't try to fix what's not broken, but there's always room for improvement. And to me, that is an approach that is consistent with what we've done, makes perfect sense, and I think it's reflective of the work that you've done since you've assumed the position of town manager, which certainly has been a challenging time, but I think that you've risen to the challenges we all believed you would, not just in terms of this budget message, but in terms of the manner in which you've done business the last several months. So just wanted to publicly acknowledge that and literally to applaud you for the work that you've done and that's presented here. So, thank you.
Mr. Hope?
The first item on the communications is a letter to our legislative delegation. This is with respect to the housing authority proposals. The Board of Selectmen has recently had discussions relative to Governor Patrick's announcement that he intends to file legislation to regionalize the operation and financial management of local housing authorities. Members of the Board of Selectmen have expressed concern relative to the impact to Wilmington's residents and are interested in learning your position on this legislation. The Board would appreciate receiving a response prior to their next meeting on January 28, 2013. Thank you for your assistance. We did receive a response from Representative Micali. It reads, "Dear Jeff, I have already taken a stand in opposition to the governor's proposed regionalization of local housing authorities. I think it is of utmost importance that all housing authorities should be accessible to the members of the community. If I can be of further assistance to you with the Board of Selectmen, please do not hesitate to contact me." We also received a letter from Representative Kenneth Gordon. I thank you for reaching out to me relative to Governor Patrick's announcement that he intends to file legislation to regionalize the operation- intends to file legislation to regionalize the operation and financial management of our local housing authority. I believe it is my duty as the elected representative for the people of the 21st Middlesex District to listen to their concerns and to act accordingly. I have heard the voices of the people of Burlington, Bedford, and Wilmington, and though, and through those voices, there permeates a concern over the uncertainty regarding Governor Patrick's announcements. It should be known that I am committed to maintaining the individual integrity of local housing authorities unless there is a reason to interfere with that local control. While I am interested in seeing what the cost benefit, if any, would be in the proposed legislation, I understand the benefits of maintaining local control of housing authorities. I plan to keep an open mind and consider the issues very thoroughly before making any definitive decision on the issue. Thank you for your time." Then we have a couple of emails. The first being from Maureen Hickey, the executive director of the Wilmington Housing Authority, and she's providing us, the board, with a copy of the governor's legislation, which talks about essentially taking 240 local housing authorities and regionalizing them into six separate districts. The next piece of correspondence is another email from Maureen Hickey. This is a proposal from the Regional Massachusetts Chapter, the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Authorities. They have their own proposal, which is slightly different. Some of the high points include creating a collaborative management and services agency, which under certain conditions would assist local housing authorities to operate and manage their program. It includes a proposal to centralize, have a central listing statewide for openings at housing authorities, and there are other proposals along those lines.
I certainly don't want to profess to be any type of expert with regards to housing and housing authorities, but I read through these, and my knee-jerk reaction continues to be one of, I guess, being somewhat, not suspicious, but not particularly jazzed about the idea of the regionalization of the housing authorities from two, whatever, 240 down to six. And this NAHRO, Massachusetts Chapter, the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials, they provided a local housing agency reform fact sheet, that page two of which talked about the benefits of their proposed version of this, and I won't go through the exercise of reading it, but, you know, I guess for anyone that's interested in this issue, they might want to avail themselves of this document because I think, at least for me, it helped me give some context and some clearer understanding to this. And I'm hopeful that our legislative delegation will proceed or at least lead with this proposal, this version of the proposal. So I just wanted to voice my position on that. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, there's Board to Consider Request from the Wilmington Sons of Italy and Wilmington Band Parents to Use the Swain School Parking Lot on Saturday, May 4th and Sunday, May 5th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the purpose of conducting a yard sale. We have a letter from Patricia Romano. "Dear Mr. Hull, the Wilmington Sons of Italy and Wilmington Band Parents are planning to co-sponsor a yard sale to raise funds for both groups. We are asking permission to use the Swain School Parking Lot on Saturday, May 4th and Sunday, May 5th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. If these dates are not available, we would like to use the site on Saturday, May 18th and Sunday, May 19th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We are planning to sell spots to community members who wish to take part in the fundraiser. Each vendor will pay a fee of $20 per day or $35 for two days. We plan on selling popcorn and soda and water. If any further information is needed, please call." And the date, there are no conflicts. We checked with the school department on the 4th or 5th.
And do we have any conflicts if, for whatever reason, they had to jump to the 18th and 19th?
I'm not aware of any, but I want to check on that.
I know they basically say as long as they have conflicts on the 4th and 5th, they want to stick with that, but. Any questions, comments, or a motion from the board?
I have a question, if I may. Is town meeting May 4th, and with the construction, would we potentially have some parking issues in terms of attendance?
Well, the plan for the town meeting is to be held at the Middlesex Auditorium.
So it's not even at that location, so, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion to that effect. Second? We'll do a second? Okay, we have a second. Motion made in second to approve the request of the Wilmington Sons of Italy and Wilmington Band Parents as aline by the manager. All in favor? Unanimous? And that concludes the regular business. Correct? Yes. Public comments. Yes, Mr. Wallace?
I wasn't asleep when you asked earlier about the budget. I just wanted to let the winded speak first. Jeff, I am glad to see in the initial looking at the budget, they were incorporating some new technology expenses into that budget. I just want to make that as a technologist and as a finance person, I think it's time that we do invest more in our technology from the town side. So I appreciate it that. I'm sure over the next six weeks, we'll be looking at detail with the rest of the budget. But thank you.
Thank you, sir. New business or committee reports? Anything down here tonight?
Yeah, I don't know. It's not really a committee report. I just will make it known that I attended the two-day Mass Municipal Association Conference and annual meeting on Friday of last weekend, on Saturday, and there were a host of breakout sessions and presentations that were made. What I planned to do is rather than kind of describe it here publicly and bore people to death is I'll let you read it and be bored to death. So I planned on summarizing my experiences and kind of giving my perspectives of what I witnessed and what I took from the meeting. I'll send that to each of you, I guess, through Jeff's office, and I guess at that point, perhaps I'll send it to our press representatives, and if they see fit to publish it, so be it. If there's a desire to hear something more substantive based on what I send to you, I'm glad to report on it at the next meeting, but if that's a reasonable course of action...
Works for us.
Okay, very well. I plan to do that then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to remind folks about the Yentile Farm Committee survey is open and available online till January 31st. There's also paper copies available in the town hall.
Down here?
Again, just congratulate the town manager on what a nice job he's doing, the budget presentation tonight.
I'm good. Thank you.
I don't have anything at this time. Important dates?
January 31st is the first finance committee meeting here in Room 9, 7:00. We'll be discussing the overview part, which include the revenues and some of the general government accounts. February 1st, the last day to submit petition warrant articles for inclusion on the warrant for town meeting. February 3rd, the Hardin Tavern Open House from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. February 4th is T-ball rookies registration begins, grade K through 1. February 5th, finance committee meeting, town hall, again here in Room 9. Items on the agenda include planning and conservation, town clerk, building inspector, Board of Appeals, and Board of Health. Then again, on February 7th, finance committee here in Room 9 at 7:00. On the agenda will be public buildings and the Department of Public Works. The next selectmen's meeting is February 11th. And then just a couple of other dates to add, we received word just today from the governor's office that the special election for replacement of Senator John Kerry, the primary is scheduled for April 30th, and the general election is scheduled for June 25th.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
In second, and all in favor? Unanimous?